On Monday, December 1st, 2014, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Spade.
Here.
Alder O'Connor.
Here.
Alder Holmquist.
Here.
Alder Thomas.
Here.
Alder Bussie.
Here.
Alder Wood, just yell. Mayor Miller.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion for approval of the minutes of the November 17th meeting?
Of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in second. Any corrections, deletions, or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the minutes have been approved. Is there anyone here? There's no one here for the appearance section. I'll declare the appearances section closed. There's no public hearing this evening. We have three items on the consent agenda. Consideration of an operator license for Sam Jeffers at Walgreens. Consideration of an operator license for Tamara Lavell for the tobacco outlet. And consideration of operator license for Christopher Lung at Cops Grocery. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, consent agenda passes. Council action items, there's no unfinished business this evening. Item two, under new business, two ways consideration of ordinance 12-14-667 is amending Title VIII, Chapter III, Section 6 of the Manona Court of Ordinances Regarding Yard Waste and Brush Disposal brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Is there a motion for approval?
New business.
Oh. New business. Mr. Stefani.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
In your packet you have a resolution for amending the ordinance as listed. We did review this at the November 5th Public Works Committee meeting. And coming forward to you with recommendation for approval. What we're asking is for the addition of a timeframe to be placed on when brush can be placed at the curb. And we're asking for no more than 14 days out prior to the scheduled collection week. So that's identified in the resolution. And on the backside of the resolution, we have how that would be displayed in the ordinance. Towards the bottom would be F, paragraph two. Mainly requesting this to clean up the curb line. There are times where you'll see residents have brush placed at the curb. Sometimes one, one and a half months before their next scheduled collection. So I know the city has a great effort going right now to help clean up properties. And the curb line is part of that. I know our code enforcement officer has been requesting of property owners to limit the time that they're putting the brush out to the curb. If we can get this identified in the ordinance, that'll help with what he's doing.
Were there any public appearances at the meeting?
Not regarding this.
Can we just make sure that this is out there? I mean, I know that this was a hot topic. And I think probably the reason this is being brought forth. But just so everyone, so this doesn't come back again because somebody says they didn't know about it. And that we can just make sure it's on the homepage of our website. Alder Thomas?
One of the reasons it was a hot topic was because we didn't have a date that... You had to have it out by a certain date, but there was none that said how early you could put it out. And people got notification that they shouldn't put their brush out. And they were sort of stunned by this because, as was I, because there was no limitation on it. And so if we're going to enforce it, we need to amend the ordinance. And yeah, I think unfortunately, I'm not sure how much... It was on the website, on the city website, but I'm not sure how much notice there was. And I think it was confusing because we couldn't point, when the letter went out, to a time that listed how early you could put it out there. So...
Yeah, I don't know what the best way, but just, you know. My phone was ringing, so that meant your phone was ringing.
When, are you talking regarding this year?
I guess it was with Marty, this year with brush.
In general.
In general.
Right. We would, if this is passed at council, we would make sure it's in our next newsletter that identifies our brush collection schedule. All that information would be put in there with that.
And I know it's beyond the scope of this, but I agree with Alder Thomas that if we have ordinances, we need to enforce them, or else we don't need them if we don't enforce them. But the one vagary is, and you know, we recently had a conversation with somebody. But are parks get used for neighborhood brush piling?
And other items.
And other items. Yeah, I don't know if there's some way, but I know Waterman Park, there's a lot piled up.
We've been contacting those residents.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I would ask, I can see where this is going to become. All right, I can't have mine out there for two weeks, but look at on city property, it's piled up. But city property tends to be a collector of...
Right. And we get a lot of neighborhood people placing their brush, their leaves, yard debris, pallets, bags of garbage on our parks and at our list station lots. I mean, it's, we even put signs up. The signs are tipped over and they put the stuff right on top of the signs. I mean, it's, we've been asking for this for about two years now in our newsletters. And on the webpage, we've even had newspaper articles, I believe, on this to help clean up our city property. You know, asking the neighborhood residents to help with that. Some do, some don't.
Alder Thomas?
Is there an ordinance that prohibits them from doing that?
It's illegal dumping. It's illegal dumping on city property. Nobody should be able to dump anything on the city property.
So it sounds like it's an enforcement issue. So can we, let's see how this goes. Maybe this will be, we'll do a reminder in the newsletter and see how it goes. But I can just see how it's going to be that we, I get a citation because I'm not doing it right. And I look at the city park and there's all that brush piled up. And then it gets into the he says, she says thing. So if we have the ordinance, let's enforce the ordinance. Alder Thomas?
One last question. So if I trim some brush and it's a month before the collection, where can I store it on my property?
Anywhere but the terrace.
So you can, so if you are, so you can put it 10 feet back from the curb? If you're not in the right... I mean, I think we need to know that because people will want to know, where can they put it?
Basically, Jeremy, our code enforcement officer requests that they keep it behind the building. And then they put it out at that period we've determined, prior to pickup.
Let's take my house, where the mayor's house, where I have lots of trees in the front yard. And I have to then have someone haul it down because it's downhill to get behind my house. And then haul it back uphill? Is he requesting, or is that what it says?
That's what they're requesting, that all storage occur behind the house. Not just brush, but gardening equipment, things like that. That people tend to pile up in their front yards.
Is there anything that prohibits me from doing that? I'm just asking because a question will come up.
There is storage prohibited in front yards, yes. In the ordinance, I could look it up and bring it back to the next meeting when this is discussed further.
Yeah, maybe let's have Jeremy at the next meeting if we're going to vote on this. So we're kind of all clear on where this is going.
That would be identified in the property maintenance code, that part of it?
Yeah, because somebody is going to say, okay, where can I put it? And if you live on a corner lot, then what do you do with it? Just...
All right. Further questions? Alder O'Connor, then Alder Wood?
I just have one other thing I wondered about with this. Didn't we typically use to start brush pickup in the first week of October?
Yes.
That's my memory. This year it's the third week.
Right.
And I'm wondering if, I didn't realize it was the third week, you know, until kind of late in. I'm wondering if that's why some of this was out there early.
We changed it this year because of complaints we had last year. We had people saying, we want you to push it back into November because the last collection came by and we still have brush.
Yeah. And I don't, you know, I can understand that, but I just wonder if a lot of people didn't realize that and put it out early because they thought it was starting.
No, I think...
I didn't realize it.
You know, we pretty much see on every collection period this happening in each zone.
Early.
Yeah, yeah. But we had the word out on the November, well, mid-October to mid-November pickup. We had that out early. And on the website, it's been in the newspaper, it's been in our newsletter. So I don't think that led to this.
Alder Wood, then Alder Bussie?
I guess I agree with Alder Thomas that I could see on quite a few properties in Manona, it's going to be quite an imposition on people if they have to cut the brush in the front yard and then haul it to the back and then haul it back to the front. When in some areas, they might have a considerable amount of brush to be moving around. The other potential problem I see with the two-week limitation is frankly, you know, a lot of times people cut the brush when there's good weather on the weekend. Regardless of when the pickup is going to be. So...
Alder Bussie?
If we could have the schedule in front of us for the next meeting too. And I think that Doug, you might be right, maybe two, 14 days. It might be able to wrap a couple of weekends in if we add a day or two to this. But we've also had a history of if, you know, and I think you schedule the pickup for when people are pruning. So a natural part of the season, either spring or fall, you're going to be pruning during this window of opportunity three times a year. So there's three windows where people would be naturally pruning. But when we do have storm damage, we have, we give notice and we've picked up in the past.
We have done special collections.
For storm damage. So if we can give people enough of an opportunity during those three seasons of the year that they wouldn't have to haul it to the, they could just time their work so that they could take it to the curb on Alder Thomas's yard.
Alder Spade?
Come and help.
I'd be happy to.
That's an excellent point, Alder Bussie. And in our discussions at the committee level, we did talk about the fact that you basically have three weekends to get things taken care of. And you can take them directly to the curb. Because as a practical matter, this sort of an ordinance wouldn't be enforced on the weekend typically. I mean, it's going to, am I correct, Dan? I mean, it's going to get enforced Monday through Friday.
Right, whenever Jeremy's working.
So, you know, at the end of the day, Friday, two weeks and a weekend prior to that pickup week. But we could change the ordinance to 16 days for clarity so that people know, you know, they've got basically three weekends. And we could even state that, because that is our intent, to give them three full weekends to get things cut and out to the curb.
And this has nothing to do with vehicle parking and lawns, right? This is all, you guys are...
Just brush.
Just brush, not leaves, not snow, not trailers. Further discussion? All right, look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Thank you, Mayor.
Item 2B is consideration of ordinance 12-14-668, amending Title IX, Chapter IV of the Manona Court of Ordinances Regarding Stormwater Utility brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Mr. Stefani?
Thank you, Mayor. Included in your packet, you should have resolution and supporting documents as well as the draft ordinance amendment explaining what we're seeking here. Chapter four, the amendment to the ordinance, we're basically seeking a change in the way the stormwater rates are charged dealt. Right now, our rates are based on impervious, pervious, and slope factor. And that's calculated out and reviewed for each parcel. We're asking to base the stormwater rates off one ERU equivalent runoff unit, which is a simplified method for determining stormwater rates. We did review this at our September 3rd, 2014 meeting. We did talk about it at two previous meetings to that as well. And I've asked Darren Pope, our engineer from Verbecker, as well as Brad Broon, our GIS intern, who's done a lot of the behind-the-scenes legwork on this, to be here as well to help answer any questions that you may have. But in your packet, I did include the APWA Wisconsin matrix for stormwater utilities. And not all of them are listed here. They have 84 municipalities that have stormwater rates. And 71 of the 84 use the ERU method. There's 138 cities and villages in Wisconsin that have MS4 permits. So not all of them are listed here, but there are a good number of municipalities that base their stormwater rates off the ERU.
Are we the only one that's not? Because we're the only one that has not applicable?
Right. We're one of those... Well, there's 71 of the 84 listed on here that base it off the ERU. We're one of those that don't. So we're one of the 13 on here, I believe, that don't base it off the ERU. And I'm not sure how many other municipalities base their stormwater rates on how we have done it in the past. I don't think that's a popular formula. But if you've gone through this ordinance, I'd like to point out that there are key parts of the ordinance that will remain. Those are the stormwater exemptions, the fee credit for stormwater quantity, and the stormwater quality. Those three items still exist in the updated code. The credit and exemption application process is still the same. So the main areas that are changing are how the rates are determined.
Have we done analysis? If I have a small lot in Tonewatha that's a steep bank that slopes totally down to the lake, so there's no stormwater, and it's very, one-car garage. Is anyone going to get blindsided by this rate change, that someone's rates are quadrupling or...
If you don't mind, Mayor, I'd like to have Darren and Brad come up here. I've asked them to be here because I know we're going to have some questions. And they're probably going to be the better ones to ask these questions to.
Because I don't think the general public's going to understand ERUs, but they understood if my lot went downhill.
Right.
I didn't, I could get a...
Brad, Darren?
The bigger thing also, if you could, why did we do this? I mean, the question is, was the old system broken and why are we changing?
The old system is an intensive effort right now. Whenever we have to determine new stormwater rates for a parcel, we send a request over to Verbecker. They have to gather all this data and then come up with the rate for us. The new method is going to be based strictly off impervious square footage, which we have the ability to do in-house with our current programs. So it's going to be any, a more efficient process for determining the rates. And we're going to capture more of the revenue that the city is due.
And does it mean it's cheaper because we're not going to Verbecker to do these analyses?
We will be saving some money. Right.
That's a benefit. Darren, welcome. So my question, are there going to be haves and have-nots in this rate change?
I don't think so. The way that it's proposed is, I think, probably the most equitable way that you can change it. There are communities out there that say that a single-family residential lot is one ERU. A duplex lot is two or two and a half. Taking it through Public Works, they were concerned that there are disparities in Manona and single-family residents. Like you were mentioning, a small house, maybe a two-bedroom house with a single-car garage or no garage that has very small impervious area. But they would be paying the same rate if, as compared to a large house that has a three-car garage, a lot of impervious area. The Public Works Committee was concerned about the disparity that would happen there. So they had recommended that we take a look at using, applying the ERU based on the impervious area that is on the lot. So you would take, say you only have, so the average impervious area among single-family lots, I think Brad, is 3,000 square feet. So through the GIS software that the city has and that Brad can use, he can find out for each lot how much impervious area is there and divide by that 3,000 square feet to get a multiple of the ERU. So it's going to be proportioned to the amount of impervious area that's on that lot. So the person that's, the lot that's generating less stormwater, they're going to pay less. The lots that have higher impervious area, that's generating more stormwater, demanding more infrastructure because of that, are going to pay a little bit more. So it's in direct proportion to the amount of impervious area which generates the runoff from each lot.
So I own a small, one-car garage home on Midmore. And I win the lottery and tear it down, put in my three-car garage McMansion and put in a three-car bay parking lot and everything. How often are we getting our GIS data updated?
We update the imagery every year, every two years. The imagery that we get through the GIS software is updated yearly, five years. So it's possible to get up-to-date imagery and to make those corrections on a year-to-year basis. We could do it every two years. That's completely up to date.
So two would be the max. I mean, it's not going to be, somebody's going to get a decade of...
In those cases, it would be done with a permit too.
Right.
I don't do permits when I do my house building.
You bring up a good point, Mayor. With the new process and with us being able to do this in-house, we do have the ability to capture those areas that change it without a permit. We've been, the way we currently do it is an old way. And if we switch, we'll be able to update this annually. And there was a bullet point part that Brad had turned in. Since 2004, there's approximately 112,000 square feet of impervious space that has been added. I'm not sure if that's been accounted for, but we've lost out on almost $21,000 in revenue because we don't have a way of checking and correcting.
So my final question, stop interrupting, but how are we going to announce this in terms that... Again, there's $21,000 unaccounted for in terms of fairness. Somebody's going to be picking, you know. I just want the information to get understandable. We don't know what ERUs are. In some kind of executive summary that this really shouldn't affect most of you. And if you do feel it affects you, we have a very good explanation as to what changed on your property. Because I know that's always been a thing in Manona, but well, if the water slopes away from the street, then you can get a credit. So I'm sure there's going to be some people wondering what happened.
And that part is still here.
You still get...
That's calculated in the calculations.
Right.
Oh.
Parcel owner has to make the...
You can experiment with my...
We've done it with Alder Ben, or Alder Person Thomas, right?
Oh, okay.
Have you really?
Your bill's going up.
I don't create any water. It goes in, my water from my roof goes into the ground.
Alder Bussie?
Is it possible to run it the old way, the new way, and to look at the variance to see, and without a whole lot of work?
It would be.
And then to be able to look at that and see, oh my God, we've got, some people are going up 120%? Or is it a 5% to 10% change?
Most of the ones that I've done so far, based on a quick trial, have been very minute differences.
Minute meaning 50%, 10%, 5%?
Like $5 a month.
Okay.
Something like that. Or I mean, not a month, sorry, a quarter. A quarter, yeah. There are some properties that haven't gotten surveyed in 10 years that have built the McMansion. They're going to have wake-up call when they get their first bill because it's going to be drastically different compared to what they had before.
I guess if there's some sampling of that that you could share with us next time...
This is one of the reasons why I, we feel like we should go to a new method is that the Excel document that we should have or would have is unavailable. So to compare the old versus the new would be quite a process.
Got it.
I would have to go line by line.
But you could do a sample for us to give us some idea.
Yes.
Okay.
Alder Thomas?
Do we know the ones that are going to have that wake-up call?
Yeah, you can...
And if so, can we do a letter to those people explaining?
We could probably send them letters saying, if your property has been added 10,000 square feet of impervious surfacing in the last 10 years, then...
You...
Something like that.
Don't you think that would make sense?
Yeah, we just need to be prepared because it's the exceptions that we will hear from. And if this makes sense, it makes sense and support it. Alder Wood?
Yeah, so I don't think it's really an extra or lost revenue. It's more about, it's reallocating it amongst customers. And I think somebody that built a McMansion 10 years ago and they haven't had their rate or their bill adjusted for that fact, they've been getting a deal and the rest of us have been picking it up. But I do agree that, you know, some advanced notification. I think it's a good idea to change the way we do it because the old way, I was involved in writing it and I know it's really convoluted. And it apparently makes it harder for us to keep our data up to date. So, yeah, I think it's a good idea. I did have a couple of questions. I noticed you added a section on customer classifications for five different customer classifications. And I'm wondering why, because when you look at the very next section on the stormwater utility rates, as far as I can tell, the rates are the same for all of them, with possibly the exception of undeveloped property. So I don't know, why do we need four different, you know, the different classifications? If we're, it's not going to make any difference in their rate?
I'm not sure. Was this, was this in there the way you sort of...
The history in that section comes from that when we first started in this process, looking at other communities and what they typically do, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, most of the ERU, the way that it's used is that communities will pick, they'll say one ERU per single-family residence. So here, the average impervious area for a single-family residence in Manona is 3,000 square feet. So that's one ERU. So to make the billing process very simple, they assign one ERU to a single-family lot. And then if it's a duplex unit, they will assign two ERUs or 1.5 or 1.8. And then the non-residential property, the commercial, the industrial, they will then calculate the square feet of impervious area and divide by 3,000 to get a fraction of the ERU. So if you're applying the ordinance that way, then the structure of having different customer classifications makes sense. And that's the way that we started before we brought it to Public Works and had the discussion about, will that type of setup create disparities between large, single-family homes and lots in small, single-family lots? So in the revisions, I'd left that in there. And which gives you the ability in the future, if you want to change the ordinance to a one ERU per single-family lot, it's in there. It could be cleaned up, I guess revised, to have no customer classifications, where it would just be based on ERU.
Okay.
So that can be restructured.
Right. Okay. And then that, one other question on the getting a credit if you think that you've done things to decrease how much... done things to decrease how much, how much impervious surface you have, or how much runoff you have, is, to me, to the ordinary resident, I think is going to be a fairly daunting If they make the application, do they have to submit the proof to us, or do, would we, would they say, we've done A, B, and C, or we think that the calculation's wrong, and then the city will run the calculation for them?
How have you done that in the past when we've had those credit applications? I've only had one.
Yeah, I think the, the way the ordinance is written, I think it specifies that the burden of proof is on the homeowner, on the applicant making the request, that they need to provide enough information in order for the Public Works Director to determine if the credit that they're seeking is accurate or not.
Okay, but they don't have to provide, I mean, there's the wind-slam analysis to figure out how much, what the runoff is and so forth. They don't have to do that. Would they just have to give us the data, correct?
They would, and often, for, for commercial sites that redevelop, they need to do that modeling, that wind-slam modeling anyway, in order to show that they're meeting our ordinance, the ordinance requirements. So part of the redevelopment process is to design stormwater best management practices that meets for redevelopment a 40% suspended solids reduction.
Okay.
So they have to do that anyway to redevelop the property.
What about residential?
For residential, the, more likely that they, they would not, you know, be putting in bio-retention basins or things like that. They would, I think in Alderman Thomas's case, she provided a topographic map that showed that half of her property, or more than half, drained to the lake. And so then there's a credit available for that.
Right. So then is there, is...
So there's, there's two different credits. There's a rate control credit, and then there's a quantity credit, and then a quality credit. And going for the quantity credit, because your property drains away from, drains into the lake and away from the street, a topographic map is sufficient for that. If you go through, for a quality, then you have to provide more information that gets into the analysis of what that best management practice is capable of doing.
Was there any consideration given, or would, how complicated would it be to give just a simple, flat credit for, if somebody had a residential, put in rain barrels, like they would get X credit for that, a rain garden based on how big it was, put in an impervious surface on their driveway, that kind of thing is, so that it would be, you know, that people would know, if I put in a rain barrel, I'd get, wouldn't be much, maybe, but they would get some, they would know what it would be, they would get some credit, because it would be, assuming they'd be taking water out of the stormwater system.
There isn't, in the ordinance as it's proposed, there aren't specific credits for using a rain barrel or putting in a rain garden or things of that. I guess that could, you know, be added to it.
Okay, would that be, I mean, it would be workable to do that as an, sort of an alternative way for a residential property owner to get a credit? They could do, this would be kind of an additional credit? Now, you have no idea what the credits would be. They might be so small that people wouldn't mess with it, but...
I want to actually jump in on that, because I think we should clarify what the typical rate is, or what the typical fee is going to be, or has been, under the stormwater assessment, because it is very small. Correct? I mean, I think we, I want to say it was 15...
1.019533 cents per square foot of impervious space was the old rate.
Yeah, and I, but I, just like a dollar amount, like on the 3,000 square feet of space, you know?
You just would take the 3,000 square feet and multiply it by that rate, that's what you would get per feet.
Right, so, yeah, so it's, that's right, yeah, that's what I was thinking. So 15, $16 a quarter, $66 a year. You know, you start giving someone a credit, you know, you're talking about $5, maybe $10 a year for a feature that's likely to cost hundreds, if not thousands, of dollars. You don't do it for that reason, though you can get a small credit if you go through this process. But I think that at Public Works, we basically said, the amounts, the amount of money we're talking about here, it just doesn't warrant too much complexity.
Right, okay. Good point.
Further questions or input?
I've got one for Alderman. You had mentioned that you want to see some examples of the impacts. Are you looking for a sample from larger business, medium-sized business, single-family?
I think, I think just a sample of, if it's not too much work, just to see what we're talking about. I mean, if it's 15 bucks a quarter, I mean, is it, is it going to go up to 45, or is it going to go up to 15, 50?
Yeah.
You know?
We've, we had that data for the Public Works Committee, and Brad can easily create some of that again for our next meeting.
Yeah, just copy that, that'd be great.
Okay.
Thanks. Don't go to a lot of, yeah.
All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Item C, Consideration of Ordinance 12-14-669, Amending Title 15, Chapter 2 of the Manona Court of Ordinances Regarding Erosion in Stormwater Runoff Control, brought forth by the Public Works Committee. Mr. Stefani?
Thank you, Mayor. Also included in your packet is the resolution and supporting materials for this amendment. Public Works Committee did review this and recommended approval of the change at our August 6, 2014 meeting. What this boils down to is, is essentially updating our current code to match the Dane County code. And I'd like to ask Darren to go over the highlights of this, this change as well. Darren's done a lot of work, not only on these amendments, but his firm, and, and he has done work on all of this in the past for us, so he's, he's got a, a good knowledge base on this. Darren, if you want to go over the highlights.
Just trying to point out a few of the major ones, and there's only maybe four that are really changes that are significant. And like Dan had mentioned, I think all these revisions stem from the city's need, requirement, to keep their stormwater ordinance current with what Dane County requirements are. Under inspections, we've added some language that during construction, when a property owner will make, will have construction on their property, that they need to inspect the erosion control measures on a weekly basis, and after every rainfall of a half-inch or greater. And when you have construction projects that disturb an acre or more, so some of the larger commercial redevelopment projects, for instance, you also need to get a permit from Department of Natural Resources. And so these inspection requirements are identical to what the DNR forces on, on those projects. So this also helps keep the city's ordinance in line with, with the DNR requirements as well.
In Dane County also?
In Dane County has this language in their ordinance as well.
Who will be doing, who would do these inspections? We don't do any, the city doesn't do any of these inspections, do they?
Our building inspector does the construction site inspection.
After a rainfall, he goes out and checks these silt fences?
Per code, yeah, but he's been performing these inspections.
He does.
Okay, good.
So it's part of, for example, redevelopment project...
I was going to say, I hope Dave Zabur will agree to that.
Well, actually, Dave's been in communication with us in the past, and we haven't heard from Dave in about two years.
Okay, good, I, that's good. I just, don't say we're doing it if we're not, so if we're...
No, Marty, Marty's out there.
Okay, good. Way to go, Marty.
But isn't there a distinction? The inspection here is, you're saying that the person that pulled the permit has to check it after the rainfall. We're not driving around every site to check.
Right, but that's the problem. So who's going to know if you went and checked? You're not going to check.
We'll let, we'll let them work on.
Our check is of their check. They have to prove to us that they've done the inspection.
They're just standing for them.
Right.
They, they need to keep inspection reports, so at any moment, Marty can go to them and say, can you please produce your inspection reports? And they have to produce a report for every week that they've been having construction, and every time that there's been a significant rainfall.
That's wonderful, that's great. Alder Wood?
Does this apply to city projects, too? In particular, I'm thinking, street reconstruction, as long as they meet the minimum square footage?
We have to take out permits as well.
So the ordinance would apply to the city? Okay. Or does?
All right. Thank you.
Other, three other points.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We could be done.
Are we done?
One of the other additions in this came from the county's ordinance as well is to...
Page 12.
Page 12, right. Is to require that when sites are, when construction happens on a site, that the area that's within five feet of the property line remain, the grades remain unchanged there. And often, and the reasoning for this is that you want to match into the adjacent property without changing the runoff patterns. But often, on property lines, there'll be stormwater management easements or swales that have been put there in order to drain the properties, you know, to the street or to, to other storm lines and so forth. So if, this is to help keep those easements and drainage ways intact when property is redeveloped, and, and prevent the situations where they're putting more water on a neighbor's property, where in the past they haven't. And if there's, they can, they can be exempted from this requirement if they apply to the, to the Director of Public Works to show that it's creating hardship, in that they have a way to meet the intent of this as well.
I'll try to make sure I understand that one correct. So if I'm building next to Thomas's house, and if I want to bring in a bucket of fill, raise my property up, as I approach our lot line, within five feet, I need to meet back to that grade level, so my additional fill is not dumping access water.
Correct.
So we don't have that kind of ordinance.
Not in the stormwater ones.
And if I indicate that I have a hardship, and that I have another way to manage that water, so it doesn't go on her property, that individual applies to Dan, and has to show proof of that.
Correct.
Right, because I know there are current situations out there.
Yeah, and you're right, that, that currently isn't in this ordinance, but when Marty reviews the, the plans for, let's say, a new construction, a large house that's going up, there is a requirement in his review process that requires the water be drained on the property owner's property, and not flow onto adjacent parcels. So that is currently being reviewed, but this will be a second, sort of, check and balance of that.
And then another third change would be...
Excuse me? Isn't there, we've got something coming up at zoning board, where they're required to raise the level of their grade, because it has to be a foot above the floodplain. So how would that work with this? They're going to raise the grade because the flood, because some other ordinance that Dan dreamed up. But, but they have to be a foot above the floodplain. So would that be, where they would come in for the exception, then, to Dan?
Right.
Okay.
Talking about that aisle?
Yeah.
So that we're all copacetic on that as it relates to this?
Should be, I'm just...
First point.
Okay.
Okay.
The third area that I wanted to mention is that how there are new standards for new development runoff rate control.
Page 15.
On page 15. Before, there were no, there was only one set of rate control, but in the county's ordinance, there's been a division between redevelopment and redevelopment. And so there are additional requirements that they have to meet if you're developing a site that has previously been undeveloped. So I think this probably isn't something that's going to be used much at all in, in Manona, because most of the development, most of the construction that happens in this city is redevelopment, because your landlocked community, and most of the property has been developed already. And then also on that same page is how infiltration is treated for new development. Previously, the only requirement in the ordinance was that all impervious area in downspouts be directed to impervious areas, areas where it can soak in, where feasible. And then that will still remain in effect for redevelopment sites. Then for new development, language has been added, which comes from the county's ordinance, to require 90% of the pre-development infiltration volume to be infiltrated. And there are, if that causes hardship, there are alternatives to that that can be taken. And again, this probably would be rarely used in Manona, because I don't think that you have much property that isn't already developed into something right now.
Alder Bossy?
Stupid question, but sometimes the county requirements only apply to townships and not cities. The requirements that you say, or that, you said that we have to follow the DNR, we have to follow the county. Do we have to, or are we, by law, are we, are we required to? Or are we using their standards as an example to follow?
My understanding is that you, that municipalities within Dane County are required to follow the stormwater requirements.
Okay. Any further questions? All right, I think we went through this three steps. Thank you, Darren. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 2D is Consideration of Resolution 14-12-1996, Approving Updates to the City of Manona's Emergency Operations Plan, brought forth by the Public Safety Commission. City Administrator Marsh?
Yeah, I would first like to thank a member of the Public Safety Commission that has worked with staff for over a year on this document, Mr. Larry Reed, has, has a long history of, with the state, of working on disaster plans through disaster services. And he was very instrumental in the document that you have in front of you. We could not have done this, come to this point without him, so I want to thank him. What you see is, is not only a revision of our existing disaster plan, it's pretty much a revamp, a whole new layout, better formatting, easier to follow, quick and thorough guide as to how we would handle a situation if there was a disaster. There are still a few minor tweaks that we have to make to this document in terms of phone numbers and agencies and things... phone numbers and agencies and things like this. And obviously, this'll be very much of a living document as staff changes and as titles change and as departments change, we will, we will adapt this document to be as, as correct as possible. With that said, the department heads with the assistance of Mr. Reed went through a tabletop exercise where we followed this document to the letter. It basically involved a tornado that went through, right through the middle of the community and closed several key intersections and caused some life-threatening situations along with some fatalities and things like that. And we went about how that would be handled. So, very informative session, and I think it better prepared us. I don't think you're ever totally prepared for something like that when it occurs, but we're definitely better prepared for that. Given that, it also should be noted that we are part of the Dane County Emergency Management System too. If anything that large should occur in this area, we would receive the assistance from Dane County and all their various departments also. So this has been through Public Safety at least a couple times, and has been reviewed and updated by staff on numerous occasions. So I think what you have in front of you is a document that's ready to be approved by this body and will be updated as needed.
Questions?
Alder Bussie?
On the media, we've got ABC, NBC, CBS, but Fox, internet, are those things that should be added to something like that? And we use our, we're not dependent upon servers here for our website, people would still be able to access that.
Yes.
So, just...
I would expect there will be a complete call list.
Yeah.
Of every radio station, phone number, emails.
Yeah, whatever.
Detailed.
Yeah, we have a, an immediate, we send out one press release and it hits all media sources in the entire region.
Further questions? I too would like to echo Administrator Marsh's compliments for Mr. Reed. He's devoted, he's a very accomplished professional with experience in disaster planning, and we're fortunate to have him doing this on a voluntary basis, so let the record show our appreciation for that. All right. Moving on to item 2E, which you will notice starred for immediate action, consideration of Resolution 14-12-1997, authorizing the borrowing of $1,500,000 providing for the, excuse me, issuance and sale of a general obligation promissory note therefore, and levying a tax in connection therewith. This is brought forth by the Finance Director. Is there a motion to take this?
Move to suspend the rules and take this out of order?
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second, suspend rules, take this out of order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and second. I will note that at Personal and Finance, this was approved. Finance Director Hodiker explained it to us earlier, but rather than have him spend the evening here with us, City Administrator Marsh is fully ready and willing to explain it.
Yeah, basically what this is, is the $1.5 million. We did a short-term borrowing with Monona State Bank to acquire the Chase Bank parcel on our redevelopment site along the river, Bridge and Broadway. What this would do is extend that current loan with Monona State Bank from the end of this year till December 15th. At that point in time, we believe that area will be in a newly formed TID, and then we would roll that into a tax-exempt borrowing at a future date. It currently can't be rolled into that because it's not in, it's not currently in a TID. So this is basically just an extension of our current loan.
Alder Spate?
Could you explain just the basic mechanics of, you know, what if that area doesn't get developed and we have this parcel of land as a practical matter?
Yeah.
What would then happen?
Yeah, I think whether, whether the area develops short-term, meaning within the next one or two years, or long-term, anytime beyond that, I still believe it's the thought process of myself and the mayor that that area would be included in a TID within this period of time prior to September, actually prior to August 15th of this coming year. And that is gonna be the recommendation of the CDA, is that that area be included in a TID due to some restrictions we have out there. So if, you know, worst-case scenario, the area doesn't develop as quickly as we hope, it would still be a TID that could borrow from other more lucrative TIDs if need be. But we don't see that really being the case as of now. We do have some investment in that area that's being covered currently by TID 8, which is the Tressta TID down the road, and we anticipate that those costs will be recouped and repaid by this new TID at the corner of Bridge and Broadway.
I think one important point to note, Alder Spate, and it was brought up at Personal and Finance, is the revenue that's being generated by that property right now exceeds the carrying charge and on the interest on the loan. And if we did end up putting that into a complete mortgage or loan, the expectation would be the revenue would again exceed what the cost is gonna be. So it's been an okay investment, although that was not the intention.
No.
Holding it, nor does it continue to be the intention.
Yeah.
Further questions? All right, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Homequest?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Item 2F is convening in closed session under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Pren 1, Pren E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is to discuss the firefighter's local 311 contract. Is there a motion to move in the closed session?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Homequest?
Aye.
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
And we should be back in about 10 minutes, is my expectation.
Now it's freezing here.
I would like to reconvene in open session under Wisconsin Statute Section 19.85, Pren 2. Moving on to item GH under New Business is consideration of Resolution 14-12-1998, is the approval of the terms of the contract with International Association of Firefighters, IAFF. Local 311 brought forth by the City Administrator. Would someone...
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
There's a motion, suspend the rules and take this item out of order. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Is there a motion for approval?
Move approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. City Administrator Marsh?
Do you like me to do a brief summary?
Yeah, just a summary.
There were, there were basically five areas that were amended in the current labor agreement between the city and the firefighter's local 311. The first of which was an hours of work issue where all call-in employees received automatic two hours of pay for any overtime pay. This section or this article was actually amended to state that employees currently on duty would not receive the extra two hours of overtime pay automatically. They would be paid time and a half for any time worked, and that would be based on 15-minute increments. The next area was Article 18, which was a health and welfare issue. Basically, we took out a paragraph that was contrary to Act 10, and when the Supreme, State Supreme Court upheld Act 10, this paragraph was removed. Article 19, supplemental benefits. This was an amendment to allow the firefighter EMTs to accumulate a maximum of 980 hours of sick time in a given year. It brought them more in line with what the police union and the non-representatives, non-represented employees have for total hours and days of sick leave. And the next was Article 21, holidays. It provided the firefighter EMTs with three floating holidays, which is also in line with that of the police union and the non-represented employees. And in exchange for those three floating holidays, the bargaining unit gave up Good Friday as a holiday. So it was a net two-day gain for the bargaining unit. And lastly, was wages. Last month, the city council approved a 2.5% raise on average for the non-represented employees. The police union will receive a 3% increase in 2015. This change calls for a 2% increase in 2015 for the firefighter EMTs, along with a 2% increase in 2016 for the firefighter EMTs. It also adds a 3% increase for any employees reaching the six-year mark in their time with the city. This is an incentive to provide longevity in the department and keep our current employees along, around longer. Both management and the bargaining unit saw this as a win-win. And lastly, as noted, with the wage increases, this is a two-year contract that would begin January 1st, 2015, and extend through December 31st, 2016.
Alder Bussie?
Pat, you had mentioned some increases from the city, but you also did some research into how the new wage rates compare in the marketplace compared to other departments, and how does our department compare to others?
Our department compares favorably with like-sized communities in Dane County and within metropolitan areas in the state of Wisconsin. So we believe that it's a good situation for our employees.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alder Thomas?
Aye.
Alder Bussie?
Aye.
Alder Wood?
Aye.
Alder Spate?
Aye.
Alder O'Connor?
Aye.
Alder Homequest?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks again for doing that process, you and Chief Sullivan. Moving on to item 8, is reports of committees, commissions, boards, and everyone else. Alder O'Connor?
No report.
Alder Spate?
No report.
Alder Wood?
No report.
Alder Homequest?
No report.
Alder Thomas?
No report.
Alder Bussie?
The Plan Commission meeting next week will be held on Wednesday, December 10th at 7:00 PM, which is a change of traditional timing.
What's that?
It's a tradition.
Cause you're the boss and you can...
No, it's, it's a tradition. There were some conflicts with the members, and we changed it to a different date.
Okay. Cause there is, it's gonna be a lot of stuff on that one, right?
No.
No?
No.
Got this one? Oh, okay. All right. Excuse me. City Clerk?
Packets are available in the City Clerk's office for anyone who wishes to run for any of the Alder person's seats that are available. There are three that are up for reelection and also for mayor.
And those three seats are?
The three seats for reelection will be Alder Wood, Alder Bussie, and Alder Spate.
And the mayor?
And the mayor. I did say that.
Who's that?
And, oh. And Mayor, what, Wood?
Wood.
Yeah. Mayor Miller. Yeah, Mayor Miller. And yeah, so those are available in the City Clerk's office. You can come in and get those and start circulating nomination papers starting today.
Administrator Marsh?
Yeah, two brief items. One is on Saturday, the 13th of this month, is breakfast with Santa Claus at the community center. So don't forget to take your children and grandchildren to that. And they are taking reservations for, I believe there's three different time slots for breakfast with Santa since we've filled up in the past. And the other item is, we will be doing our borrowing for the 2015 capital projects in February of this year. You will note that there are a lot of ongoing capital projects going on right now from 2014 that will also extend into 2015 also, but the actual borrowing for next year will be 2015. And we've been told the rate should be, should remain stable through mid-year 2015. So what you see now is what we should get.
A little bit early?
We have some projects that we need the money for.
Oh, okay. For a bake sale. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, the only thing which was exciting this morning, I noticed the digger showing up at Ruby, so the demolition of the octagonal building on the triangle may have begun today, but I saw the unloaded equipment. It should be done, completed, so I think that will remove a longtime eyesore in the community. That's all I have. Moving on to appointments, we have two appointments this evening. Doug Paul to the Mass Transit Commission, effective immediately running through May 2016, and Brooke Logan to the Sustainability Committee, effective immediately running through 2016. Is there a motion for approval of these appointments?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Appointments are passed. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move adjournment. Second.
Motion and second. All those in favor for adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings adjourned. Thanks, everyone.